Good evening, everyone. Let's call to order the study session of April twelfth, twenty twenty-two. And Councilmember Peterson will be absent. Can I get a motion to excuse Councilmember Peterson?
I move that we excuse Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Do we need to do a motion in a study session to excuse a council member? I don't believe so.
Well, we don't, but it's a it, we can do the, do that just to make it clear in the record what the, the discussion was about and who participated.
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Peterson. All in favor say aye.
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 Donna, will you do a roll call, please?
Yes, I will. Councilmember Sherman?
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt?
Here.
Marinesco?
Here.
Councilmember Bowden?
Here.
And Councilmember McDowell?
Present.
All right. Tonight, we're here discussing the animal control ordinance. City Manager Jeff Knight has details for us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. So council heard this at a study session earlier this year, and then heard it again on the business agenda in February. And then the item was tabled for further discussion for three concerns that council members brought up and that we want to work through tonight. And if there are any others, we can certainly talk about those as well. But the three concerns that I have in order, and if it's okay with council, I'd like to take those each in order and kind of work through each issue separately. The first one is licensing requirements for cats. The second is the number of days that we hold dogs in our shelter. And the third is issues with chickens, both the number, lot size, those types of things. So with that, moving on to the first item, and it is on page three of the ordinance, section seven point zero four, point zero two zero. And it, it has a subsection A that all dogs and cats kept in the city of Shelton over six months, six months of age shall be licensed annually, except those that have a microchip which have a lifetime license that, that part of it. So I would love to hear some discussion from the council and come to a consensus about how we move this draft forward.
I have a comment.
Sherman.
I think you should just scratch the word cats on that one. That's my vote.
Councilmember McDowell?
Um, I have a couple of concerns about licensing cats. We have far, a feral cat issue in this town. And so, you know, how do we deal with that? Nobody really owns those. Do we, how do you catch a cat that's not licensed? I mean, it's not like here kitty kitty, come and get a treat. You know, it's like that's, that's one concern I have. How is the, how, how will those cats be picked up and taken to the pound?
So I don't know exactly, but I assume that, and I am sure that our code enforcement and animal control people are very talented in that regard and probably have really thick gloves.
I, I don't see any hands up. I definitely have concerns about registering cats. I mean, cats are primarily owned by our senior citizens, and we're going to have grandma come down here and register her cat, you know, down to the city every year. It just seems silly to me. And do we really want our code enforcement out chasing cats or cleaning up properties? I just have a huge concern about it. I don't think we should register cats. I think it's silly. I understand dogs, they chase cars, they go into people's yards, they, you know, they bite people, but come on, they're the cats. So I
I've had a few cats in my yard. But like, that's, yeah, I, I'm not sure how I feel about registering cats.
All right. Deputy Mayor Schmidt?
All right. So my question may be directing towards Jeff. When we're going through this, what, what is the point of registering an animal in most city governments?
It's to be able to determine the ownership of the animal if there is damage caused to other property or if unfortunately it gets, you know, hit by a car or something like that. And it's also in order to keep track of how many animals a household has. Those types of issues.
Understood. And I guess I'd just like to make more of a general comment, more than anything specific on this particular ordinance. We've been discussing a lot of code enforcement related changes to our city code. And there's a reason why we are. Drive around town, right? Check out most residential neighborhoods. There are challenges. Our code enforcement officers are overwhelmed with, with the workload that is currently in front of them. The policy needs to be reflective of the priority. We are prioritizing code enforcement because we hear complaints. We see the challenges that that brings to our community. I think it behooves us to significantly put the effort in on the policy. So that way our code enforcement officer, as well as our community, understands our, our goal, which is to create a community that people want to live in. Whether we're talking about registering cats or any other domestic animal, I think we have to just kind of step back and remember what we're trying to accomplish here. You know, it's, it's been interesting dialogue. I definitely have heard from folks in the community about, you know, chickens and the, you know, food insecurity and things like that. And I don't disagree. At the end of the day, though, we do have a problem with people who do not tend to or take care of pets or other domestic creatures in the community, and therefore creates an environment where people don't want to live. And I think it's important for us to keep that in, in focus and to, when we're looking at these ordinances, to make sure that that is, you know, our long-term vision here. And if that needs to change, we should be discussing that, right? If, 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 if this component of community life and economic vitality and accountable government, you know, if this is something counter to that, then yeah, we should be, we should be dissecting this and pulling those pieces apart. But if it isn't, I believe we should be pushing this forward. That's just my comments on this. And I can apply that to the last three or four different discussions related to code compliance and code revisions. So I'm supportive as written, as it is today. I was at the beginning. But I'm willing to discuss and debate this with the rest of you guys and, and folks in the community. But remember, that's kind of the goal here and what we're trying to accomplish. But just wanted to pass that on. Thank you.
Councilmember Bowden?
I am with Councilmember Schmidt. I, I am for it as well. I don't really have a lot to say about it, but I, I'm definitely for it.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Gutiérrez?
I, I guess my question is, what are the impacts of scratching cats off? Is that going to increase the amount of feral cats in the neighborhood? And what are the impacts of feral cats to a neighborhood and to the environment?
Yeah, so I don't have the, the data in front of me, but feral cats, any cats really, are a danger to birds in particular. But the impacts, I don't think this action or, you know, any, whichever direction you choose on this particular one will serve to decrease or increase the number of feral cats. It's just a matter of, you know, one, a major component is animal welfare, like I mentioned, to make sure that somebody doesn't have thirty cats living in their house, that kind of thing. That's what it's intended to do. And, you know, to, to be able to identify the owners if we need to, for whatever reason.
Councilmember Bowden?
I know one of the issues with feral cats is, I actually have two properties right now that I'm, I'm constantly battling that because they, they can get into a park under the house, and I keep trying to block it, but they're, they're pretty creative. And they go to the bathroom under there, and it's, it's a big issue. And it actually makes the house inside stink and everything. And they're feral neighborhood cats. And they also tend to beat up other cats quite often because some of my tenants have pets, and their cat comes home beat up quite a bit from, I'm going to assume from feral cats, because there's a lot of them around the house. So that, that's one of the issues that they can cause.
I see you, Councilmember. Yes, but Councilmember McDowell?
Well, I don't, on my end, I'm not sure how I feel about licensing the cats. I have to do some more study on that. But licensing the cats are not going to get rid of the problem cats, which are the feral cats. They're going to be here. Whatever you do, whatever you license a cat, the feral cats are still going to be here. They go back and forth in my yard all the time. They are a problem, but I'm just not, not sure about licensing cats. You, Jeff, you mentioned about knowing how many cats would be in somebody's house. A few years ago, we were discussing the fact that we needed to find out who had good electrical wiring in their house and plumbing and all that, you know, going in their house to see if their houses, does anyone remember that issue, that discussion we had about going in and, and seeing which houses were safe and which weren't? Does anyone remember that?
That was rentals. That was
Yeah, that was rental.
The landlord thing.
Right, landlord. So the issue there, they never went forward with that because the issue there was going into someone's house and checking that out. So do we really want to go into someone's house to see how many cats they have? I don't know. I, that's, I, I don't know.
It, yeah, Councilmember McDowell, I guess if, if they're not registered, how do you know they're not feral?
Right. I wouldn't know whether they're feral or not by regist, I mean, I, I, I don't know whether they're feral or not.
Stick your hand in front of one of them, you'll know. Jeff, am I wrong? Is, we, we are making a deal with Kitsap Human Society to house our dogs because it was too much work for code enforcement. We wanted them out doing code enforcement, and here we are going to add a new task to them, chasing cats. So explain that, the, the, the reasoning behind that. Okay, so we're going to move dogs now to Kitsap County, and now we're going to be housing cats the same, the same way. This seems like it's a, the last, the agreement with Kitsap is just counterproductive now. Why don't we just keep dogs here too?
Well, we have, yeah, dogs and cats would be treated the same.
So we're going to pay, pay a hundred dollars to move a cat to Kitsap?
I think the, the cat, and I don't have the Kitsap or the adopt a pet contract in front of me, but cats were less expensive than dogs. Although I'm not positive, but I can definitely get you information on that.
Okay. Are we, I'm going to get everybody laughing here. Are we going to register chickens so we know who owns them? Putting collars on them?
There, there are, there are no plans at the moment to register chickens.
I can tell you two spots right now that today I drove by, there was chickens in the road. But Councilmember Gutiérrez?
Thank you. My question, like, I guess my, my comment would be, I think registering your pet is more of a safety issue. Like, if I say, I will answer your question. Like, if I say I have twelve pigs at my house, and I, I, four, I only have eight now, or the other four, then there's like, you can have a search party, but for the poor chickens, you know. Or if I had three cats and two of them were missing, I could have the search party go look for my two missing cats. I mean, there's a safety issue involved with that. And I know Shelton especially, shop, lost and found in the Mason County, they find and re-unify owners with their pets all the time. They're always missing pets in the county. I think part of the issue of this registering pets is having a registry so that we know where these animals belong. And if we find them, how, how do we get them home?
Councilmember Sherman?
So is there any thing saying that if you want to register your cat, you can or can't? Because if you want to register your cat, I feel you should, even if this doesn't pass. That's an option, correct?
Councilmember Bowden?
I, I, I feel like a part of it is, what I'm hearing as well, though, is it kind of comes down to like responsible pet ownership. And when there's a registered pet, you're kind of telling the world you have a pet where some people get pets and then it doesn't work out, and they just throw them outside. It's a cat, it'll be fine. They stop feeding it on their porch, and they, they do things like that. So I think it's more about responsible pet ownership than it completely ratifying feral cats. And I mean, I know that it's not going to stop feral cats, but if people are registering, hopefully it would slow down the pace of them.
Council, or Deputy Mayor Schmidt?
Hey, I just got to say, remember, the, the thing we're talking about here isn't the responsible pet owner, isn't the, isn't the average everyday resident in Shelton. The thing we're talking about is the thing that becomes a problem in our community, the, the problems, right? These are problems brought to us. And we have to look at policy to resolve those problems, right? That is our job. And we, we have to weigh in all these facts and, and in our community's input. But at the end of the day, we still have an issue. We still have an issue we have to solve here. And I do not believe for one second that, you know, code enforcement is going to drive around town looking for cats and chickens and dogs and kangaroos or whatever, running around the community and scooping them up and, you know, jamming them all into the animal control facility or the pound or whatever. It's complaint based, right? If you have continuous issues in an area, it ratchets itself up to the code enforcement. We have a progressive process to go through. That's what we're talking about here. We're not talking about this, the average everyday normal situation. We're talking about those unreasonable moments. And again, I invite you, drive around town. You will, you will absolutely see the challenge that's in front of us. And the thing is, a lot of these issues have gone on for so long that they're a massive problem. They're a large and a very significant issue. We need to be able to be out front of this, be very clear of our expectations, very clear of our goals to prevent that from, from happening, right? To prevent those catastrophic absolute challenges that we're not able to deal with, other than spending a lot of money and going through court processes and weaning properties and things like that. This is all, this all kind of plays together, in my opinion. And, and to get out ahead of it, to give that clear concise direction to our staff and to the public, I think is what we need to be focused on.
And, and we really think cats and chickens are a priority in our city right now. I mean, we've got other things that are on file that we need to take care of before we worry about cats and chickens.
That it all plays together. It all plays together into one piece, right?
There are all those priorities, and I think priorities are not cats and chickens. I, Jeff, how much is a cat license fee going to be?
So it's, I believe, twenty-five, twenty-five dollars. But then the lifetime fee of its microchip is a hundred.
I think that we're just going after people trying to live the American dream and, you know, and be happy and have a pet that makes them happy. I, I don't see grandma coming down to register her cat, paying twenty-five dollars when she's living on a thousand dollars in social security. I say that we waive the fee completely, if that's the direction that we're going to head. Anybody else?
Do we talk about chickens now?
Jeff's, you want to put it in order. We're still, are we done with, done with the cat registration?
I agree. I agree with Eric on the, is the little old lady going to come down and register her cat? I don't know. How do we know? How, it comes down to how do we know what is a pet cat and what is a feral cat? Because people have pet cats that are outside, and they roam the neighborhood. People also have pet cats that live in the house full-time. There's feral cats that live out there. How, how do we know, unless it's like Joe said, continual complaint? You know, this cat is in my yard. But then what do you do? You come down to look for it, and it's gone. I don't know.
Councilmember Sherman?
I have a question. How many cat complaints do we get a year?
At the moment, we don't get any because we don't have a registration requirement.
Okay, so we don't get a lot of calls with people upset about cats?
No. Not as far as, no.
Why don't we leave it then on cats if we don't ever get complaints?
Because we have no enforcement on anything when we do get complaints. If we don't have something in place, it's kind of like setting up the camping in town things. We're not doing it to, to completely go after people. But if we have no rules to follow, then there's, there's no guideline. So I mean, no one's going to go knocking on doors and saying, hey, I see that you have a cat. You need to come pay twenty-five dollars to the city.
Right.
So it's, but we have to establish some level of, of, of order with it, or, or, or we don't have any.
Councilmember Gutiérrez?
Thank you. Over the past several years that I have owned backyard chickens, feral cats have been a problem with creation, but, but there is no code. So what do you call? It's like, oh, it's circle of life, you know, so I don't know. But if we do, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just trying to answer some of the questions about what, what's going on in our backyards. And, and, you know, if you study about cats, cats have their own range and, and, and locations where they want to be, even if they are your, your cat, they have three different houses sometimes that they, you know, that they visit. So it's a really good question about what, what, how do you define a feral cat? But is registration taking away that feral tag?
Any, anyone else? I think you got your answer there, City Manager.
I'm, well, I was just going to clarify because right now I have two council members that say don't and two council members that say do.
And I don't know yet.
I definitely think if we go that route, we should waive the fee.
Okay, so
So I'll, I'll, I'll go ahead and just say, look, I, I, I don't want to derail progress. All right. So all I want to make sure that it gets conveyed here is we prioritize code enforcement because the public said code enforcement is an issue. We have been reviewing code enforcement, various ordinances. And as Councilmember Bowden explained, if it's not written down, we can't hold people accountable. Okay? So when we have these contentious scenarios where we have a problem and we're trying to solve it, we're not going to be able to solve it. We're going to have challenge, we're going to have a hard time doing that. So as written today, I'm supportive. If it needs to be modified, the consensus of the council, I will, I will go with that. But I want us to make sure we're keeping this in mind, that code enforcement is many components. It's not just building codes. It's not just life and health safety. There's many pieces to this, and this is one small part.
It's, it's an expensive part for a senior citizen that has thousand dollars monthly social security that needs a cat to make them feel better. Councilmember Gutiérrez?
Okay, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to say that I am in favor of the code, if the fees are fair. And that we would like to, I would just like to have codes in place so that we've got a standard baseline to, to move forward in our city.
Okay.
All, all right. You got consensus there, City Manager?
We do, I think.
I think this is the longest conversation we've had on one issue.
It's a great debate. I am enjoying listening to it. It's fantastic.
All right. Number two?
Number two is the number of day, yeah, the number of days we hold dogs, which is on page five of the ordinance. And it is specifically section seven point oh four, point one, one oh. And in that section, I know there was some concern expressed about transferring the dog to either Kitsap County Human Society or Adopt a Pet. You know, if someone was on vacation or something like that. And I just wanted to, to put that out there again and just specifically call out section A of that, of that section. Excuse me, I'll read it real quick. The reclaim period. Legal owners and persons authorized by legal owners may redeem impounded dogs and cats within either three or seven business days from the date the city, city notifies the owner that the animal has been impounded. So that, I think that's an important piece there at the end that would, I think, address some of your concerns or some of the concerns that I heard expressed at the, at the last meeting. I'd love to hear council discussion on this one.
So Jeff, I have a question real quick. You're kind of hard to hear right now. I don't know if it's my, or you. Did you say seven days on that?
It was drafted as three. Council asked that we change it to seven.
Okay.
So we did that. I just wanted to point out that the code says within either three or seven days, whichever direction council asks for, from the date that the city notifies the owner that the animal has been impounded.
Okay, thank you.
That, is that by letter or phone call or knock on the door?
Could be all three. So if an animal has a, a microchip, we'll notify the owner immediately. It has all the contact information, you know, coded into it. So we'll call, we'll text. I mean, we may even skywrite if it's a clear day.
Some of, some of those animals have, some of the dogs have a collar on that says the owner and the phone number.
Yep. Yeah, so the, the, the period starts from the date of notification to the owner. As long as ownership can be established, right? If the dog doesn't have the tag on the collar or a microchip or the microchip's out of date or something like that, then we're in, we're in an area where we don't know who the owner is.
So our staff recommendation was three days because we wanted to speed up code enforcement so they're not babysitting dogs, correct? And so, and you, staff would like three days. So could we do three business days? So if it is on a Friday night or Saturday?
Absolutely.
That, that would be a little easier. So if they were picked up on Friday night, they'd have till Wednesday?
Sure.
Because, you know, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I'd be three days if, if they were business, three business days.
They have until Thursday because, yeah, five to five o'clock on Wednesday, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Code enforcement doesn't work seven days, correct, Jeff?
No, unless there's a specific reason for them to.
Okay. But the police would go pick up a dog if it was
Yeah.
streets. I've seen him do it, so.
Absolutely.
And then they'd call Shannon in or lock them up and feed them and stuff, you know.
Or we have terrific volunteers that help us at the shelter too.
So three or seven days, people. She's looking for some consensus.
I would say seven.
For three, especially if it's business days, three is plenty time.
People, what do you do when they're, when they're not home and they're on vacation or out of town of business?
Again, on this one, I come back to the reasonableness of our staff. I don't think anybody is going to go up. I, I called and they didn't answer, so let's impound their, you know, let's euthanize their animal now. I don't think that's how that's going to go. I think there's going to be a reasonable attempt to make contact with people. And if, and Kathy, your point, that people are on vacation, I firmly believe our code enforcement officers aren't going to, you know, move along something if there's a reasonable explanation here. And again, I'm pointing back to the problems. The problems are what we're trying to talk about here. And we're, we're not talking about the person who leaves to go on vacation for a weekend. We're talking about the person who abandons a pet or lets it run, right? And that's an issue.
A couple, a couple of years ago, we were sitting in our backyard. This is at a time when they weren't picking up any dogs that, unless they were dangerous. The other dogs just could run. We're sitting in our backyard one night, and this dog just came through our yard. Very friendly, but we didn't know who it was, who it belonged to. So, you know, that's, that's an issue there.
When, Councilmember, if I could, the city, the three days or seven days or whatever council's desire is, doesn't start until the owner has been notified. Doesn't start until the owner has been notified.
Oh, okay.
If somebody's on vacation, you know, and we can't get in touch with them, then.
Oh, okay.
Councilmember Sherman.
Yeah, um so what if you can't find the owners? What happens? Is it three days and then they go elsewhere or?
So it would be, uh and let's just assume it's three days for the sake of clarity.
Okay.
Uh after three uh three business days, then we would um. Notify either Kitsap Humane Society or Adopt a Pet. That we have an animal that is uh uh you know, unclaimed and ready to be adopted. Those organizations, we would either take, uh we would take the animal to one of those organizations. And then they would work with the animal to try to find a suitable family for adoption, but it doesn't mean. That uh the animal's gonna be adopted that day. Certainly, I mean, there's some and some dogs and cats unfortunately that uh wait for quite a while before they get adopted if they ever do.
So I have a a part two to that question. Um okay, so hypothetically, you you do contact the person, you get a hold of them and. They're high and somebody is supposed to be watching their dog or whatever, and and that person bailed on them. Do you say, okay, well, hang on to your dog until you get back, or do you send him on to Kitsap anyways, even though it's possible?
No, we absolutely would not. So the code uh says that. Uh it can be reclaimed by the legal owner or persons authorized by the legal owner. So if the the person that was supposed to be watching their dog bailed and they can't get a hold of them, they can authorize somebody else. Or, I mean, we're we're gonna be reasonable. They say, hey, we're in uh, you know, Florida for a week or whatever. Okay, when will you be back? You know? Friday, then, you know, you're more than welcome. We'll hold on to the dog till Monday. That's not, that's not. Yeah, we're not uh uh cruel and unusual.
All right, thank you.
All right, so the question to Jeff is three or seven days?
Or three business.
Or three business days. Three business days. It's one, two. Kathy, you said seven. Sharon? And you're on mute.
Um. I I know it's gonna kill you. I'm I'm more leaning to the seven. Break the middle and call it five. That would be fine with me, too.
Okay, council member Bode.
I I like the three business days, all right, yeah, three businesses.
One, two, three. I I like the three business days if we if we can't contest the seven days, so I think we have it there, don't we?
What Miguel say?
He said, he said three, three business day.
I mean, I don't really care, three or seven. It doesn't matter to me.
Okay, well, I think we Jeff Scott has consensus on that one. Number three, the hot topic.
So number three is uh uh chickens. And let me get back here. It's we're in the back of the ordinance. Uh or the back of the draft ordinance. So the section uh that we, there's some concern about uh at the last meeting that we're talking about this evening. Is uh um. The last page of the ordinance, other than the signature blocks. Uh seven point oh eight point oh four oh. And that section reads, and I'd like to, I'll just read all of it. Uh chickens may be kept in the neighborhood residential zone. On lots or parcels of five thousand feet, five thousand square feet or more. Uh roosters are explicitly prohibited. Uh parcels or lots that are five thousand square feet up to. Forty three thousand five hundred and fifty nine square feet, which is just one square foot shy of an acre. Shall not keep more than five chickens. Chicken coops or other structures intended to house chickens must be set back from any property line, not less than ten feet. So ten feet or greater and shall not be located closer than thirty feet from any residential structure, whether it's yours or whether it's your neighbor. So. Uh or I'm sorry, any residential structure on any adjacent or adjoining lot, so any of your neighbors' uh houses. And that is pretty much what we have. Um and I'd be uh uh very interested to hear council's views on this particular section.
All right, councilmember McDowell.
Okay, um I I'll I'll read this now. A a statement from a citizen here in Shelton. She feels that uh we need to review the lot size. Not all lots would meet the five thousand square foot restriction. You can have a little tiny lot. I I'm not sure if I feel comfortable with limiting the lot size more than limiting the number of chickens. Um I would rather see us limit the number of chickens before we limit the lot size. And that's how she's feeling. Four chickens per per lot, no matter how big your lot is, just as long as they're away from. The neighbors. Far enough away from the neighbors. Now. Roosters. If a person has a rooster now, are are they gonna be having to get rid of that rooster?
Roosters are already illegal in the city of Shelton.
Okay, okay, because we have one up the road from us that.
Everybody has up the road from them.
Yeah.
Morning.
Um I personally, I feel that we should number the amount of chickens. Per household, four chickens per household or five with no roosters. Instead of limiting the lot size, because someone might live on a little tiny lot, someone might live on a big lot. Uh we don't, you know, don't know that right now.
All right, really quick before I'm going, uh councilmember Gooder Terrace, I agree with Commissioner Mc- councilmember McDowell about the lot size. I don't know why, if we're gonna have chickens, why would we discriminate? Because there are lots a little smaller than the guy next door, so if we're gonna do chickens, I I say the lot size doesn't matter. Councilmember Gooder Terrace.
Um something to think about for with chickens is um the carrying capacity of the size of your lot. So I think five chickens is fine for five thousand square feet, but if you have forty three thousand square feet. I think you'd have proportionable amount of chickens that you can keep on your land. Uh this is for food security and for the regenerative health of your garden. Um for example, and even though a a person might have a double sized two thousand foot lot, if you have. Five chickens, it it can, you can support way more chicken activity on your land. Um feasibly, maybe up to twelve or up to twenty four even, and and up at forty three thousand feet. Um square feet. I mean, a whole acre, you can have dozens and dozens of really well maintained chickens. And not only have food security, but be use it as part of regenerative gardening and not adding chemical fertilizer. And not adding to um more carbon output in into the environment, so. I think anything that we do should have. Not only the component of whether your land is sustainable and workable, but. How much can your, how much can your land support? And then how much can you actually eat off it? Because if you have. Five pens, then you can live off their eggs, but if you have five broilers, that's a one one time deal. You can have a party. Like one part, one time party, you know, so I'm saying the number of chickens is is very important. Um you should have at least twelve to feed the family, twelve pens for, you know, to get ten eggs a day to feed a family of four. Um otherwise, then if you're having four, then those are just pets. You know, but if you're actually using these chickens to feed yourself and to feed your family, you would need at least twelve to um. Support your family a ongoing, um and I believe that um. We can have as many as twelve on. A a size lot, maybe a thousand square feet per per chicken, or but then it's backyard too, so. Um you might have to deal with, you know, what's your backyard space, and that's maybe that's the limit limiting factor. Um but you cannot, you can responsibly hold more than five chickens. Um well, and use their products and byproducts in back into your garden. And still have food for yourself and help out the environment. So I think backyard chickens is a is a great idea, and I think we should have more, not less.
Anybody have any issues on the lot size?
I have a few questions. I'm. What do the other towns that are similar in size to us have uh regulations on this? Do we have anything on that?
Yeah, so uh the research we did uh was, it was typically. Uh depending uh on where it was at, right? So if you're uh in a town like Dupont. Or somewhere that is much more uh in a much more urbanized area, chickens are prohibited.
Okay.
Uh so but if you're in a town similar to Shelton like Yelm. It's exactly no more than five, but in all cases that I've seen, uh roosters are prohibited.
Right, um what about um Squim? Do we have any ideas about them? I I feel like we have a lot of similarities to Squim.
Yeah, I haven't looked at uh Squim specifically, but I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, I'd be curious about they what they do with that.
All right. So um one of the questions is lot size. Do we have, this is whether we allow them at five thousand feet or under five thousand feet? Does anybody have any concerns about that? Councilmember Bode.
I don't specifically have concerns about it. One, we don't really have a ton of lots. Under that right now that have much on them, just like we don't have a lot of one acre lots in town. I mean, we we have some decent sized lots in town, but like it's it's just setting a parameter. So we have something to work in. I mean, I don't, like like we've talked about with the cats, I don't think anybody's gonna come to your house and. Measure out your lot specifically and say, yeah, sorry, you're at forty nine hundred. We we can't have chickens here. Um. But uh I I don't know, I think there's a real, just like the expectation, we all, we do live in a city. It is a city. It's not huge, but just the expectation to have. An abundance of chickens, I don't think should really be there. When, I mean, I I I'm fine with five. I really don't care, but just I don't think that the expectation should be there, that I should be able to have. An unlimited amount of chickens in the city.
I I agree with that statement.
I I only have one other kind of question around this is why, why are we picking chickens? How did chickens arrive on the menu here?
So uh chickens uh are um common. In uh in areas of Shelton. Uh we did have uh at one point a person in town with a kangaroo. So it's uh by, you know, by no means the only uh different animal. Uh than a, you know, a normal dog or cat. Uh but they're more common than just about anything else. Uh that I would hope to run into uh in my my travels around town.
And I guess we're talking about chickens because there's an issue related to foul in the community. Right? We're not conjuring this up out of thin air to discriminate against chicken owners. So there's been a repetitive issue that has been apparently funneled through staff to our level, right? And from the public, we've we've heard it, right? We've heard it from code enforcement that these things are issues. Just wanted to make that bold, underlined statement again, so.
And that and that is exactly what I said at the last study session, that we have chickens that are pooping and rats that are. Running around wild, eating their food and, you know, so that's why I, the last day session, I said that I just thought we shouldn't have chickens. It's the city limits. I mean, you know, we can have, we're talking about having twelve chickens and four household pets. Something's weird here. Go ahead, councilmember McDowell.
I um. I feel like. Well, anyway, having chickens, four chickens per lot is not any big deal. I don't think. I've had four, I've had three, I've had two, and I don't have any because the last one. Got murdered, but anyway. Um and I'm thinking of getting more. I'm getting, I'm thinking of getting four more chickens. I'm not sure if I am or not, but I would like to have that. That privilege to do that. Maybe we need to register, go into the city and say, okay, I'm gonna build this coop and I'm gonna have chickens. I just wanna let you know that I'm having chickens. I don't know how that would work.
Twenty five bucks a chicken.
You should uh uh set the license fee by pound, I think. So.
Councilmember Bode, oh, sorry, Jeff, we're done.
We are we asking people to register their chickens? Did I miss that?
No, I was just.
For a second, I'm like, I read this thing and I didn't see that anywhere in there. What? Okay, just making sure I didn't miss something.
It's added excitement to the meeting, that's all. W. Mayor Smith.
Yeah, I just had a uh, whoop, there we go, uh just had a question and this kind of just popped into my head at the moment, but. Um chicken coops, um the discussion around it being, you know, twenty five feet from a structure. Is there, I'm thinking of building code now, um and the extravagant uh. City chicken coops that uh I've seen in other municipalities, um how does that weigh into this as well? Like, uh, you know, is a two hundred square foot rule apply here and all that?
Yep, uh so two hundred square foot or less, uh no building permits are required. Uh as long as you meet setbacks. Uh well, no building permits are required. You have to meet setbacks regardless of the type of structure. So um we're setting a different setback here than what is typically found in a residential zone for like a a garden ship. Or something like that, that you put in your backyard that has uh, you know, common setbacks that. You meet those setbacks, you're good to go. These are a little bit different because we are measuring the location of the coop from uh residential structures. On adjacent lots. Uh and from the property line where you typically measure a setback.
Councilmember Miguel.
So, for example, um. My chicken coop is um on the edge of our property. It's twen- it's more than twenty five feet from the resident. It sits against this old garage that they don't use anymore. Would you be coming in and saying, okay, you gotta move your coop? Are you gonna let people keep their coops where they are, but the new ones that come in will have new regulations?
So uh we don't, we don't require a building permit, and we don't require a registration of chickens. Uh the only time this would come into play is if uh and we're not, we're not proposing to do either of those things. The only time this would come into play is if your neighbors are calling code enforcement or. Um you know, putting a a code enforcement complaint in on the on the app. That, you know, hey, this uh this person has fifteen chickens and the coop is right next to the fence and it's, you know, five feet from my bedroom.
Yeah. All right.
I don't know if we got what Jeff needs for the lot size. Did we agree to?
What what I heard, the consensus is that we take away the lot size requirements. And that we limit it to five chickens from per per residential lot in the city.
Yeah.
Regardless of size.
Yeah.
Is that, is that fair? Uh everybody kind of fell on that.
Uh sounds fair to me.
Yeah, it sounds fair to me.
Okay.
Yes.
And I will get the information about what uh Squim does to councilmember Sherman.
Well, thank you for the chicken talk. Do we have uh anything else council wants to discuss in this ordinance?
We're done with chickens already?
I think we're, I think that was number three.
That was the highlight of my evening, so.
I I have one more thing uh that I keep forgetting to tell all of you, but your uh budget books are here. And Donna has them, so if you wanna come pick them up, it's got a great picture on the front. You'll love it. It'll look great on your bookshelf.
Yes, councilmember McDowell.
One more thing on the chickens. Now, make it clear to me, the roosters, what if someone has a rooster? Are you going to go make them get rid of it?
Only if somebody complains.
Okay, all right.
I complain all the time about a rooster.
All right.
Now we'll be able to do something about it.
Oh, roosters are already, were already illegal. In our in our last code. All right, nothing else in the in the ordinance anybody wants to talk about? Anybody have any concerns? Any items for new discussion?
Hey, I just wanna say this was interesting topic, but this is the thing that I would envision a study session to look, feel and act like. Um so I and I don't know, uh I know James Bode, we talked about this months ago, go into the study session format. I don't know. This is kind of the level of debate discussion that I think we should be having more regularly, so I appreciate you guys. Uh taking the time to research everything and to bring these things forward. The debate's good. This is how we make uh good ideas, the best ideas, right? So uh appreciate that. So thank you.
All right, council, I have a new items for discussion. If none, this meeting is adjourned at six forty nine P M.